Good evening, everybody. We're gonna let the list populate for attendees to the meeting, so just give us a few minutes as that occurs. I think there's around 150 or so folks that are registered to attend tonight, so we're just gonna let that list populate a little bit more, just to make sure. And I guess I'm gonna, is my video choppy, Marie, or is it coming through fine?
Coming through well.
Okay, thank you. Everyone else seems a little bit choppy, so if I don't see you raise your hand, I think you might have an issue on my end. Please speak out if you have something to say to any board member. So it looks like we're at about 118 participants, it seems to have leveled off. So I'm gonna say, let's go ahead and get started here. And I'd like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District School Board Action Meeting of September 20th, 2021. And at this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to introduce Ms. Andracy, who will introduce our pledge speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's student for I Led the Pledge is Sean Monahan. He is a third grader from Conde Quinnesing Valley Elementary School. Sean is the son of Kevin and Jenny Monahan of Cranberry Township. He is also the little brother of Maggie, who is a junior in the Seneca Valley Senior High School, and Patrick, who is a freshman in the Seneca Valley Intermediate High School. Sean was nominated this evening by his principal at CVE, Mrs. Deanne Graham. And Sean's mom tells us that his favorite subject is math and that he would ultimately like to be a math professor at Carnegie Mellon University when he grows up. She also shared that Sean loves being in the classroom of his CVE teacher, Mrs. Donna Schaefer. So at this time, we would ask that the board administration turn off their videos and invite everyone watching us to please stand if they are able and join us as Sean leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Polano, when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you working it? Thank you very much. This one will go to the roll call. Ms. Vinsley, if you could call the roll, please.
Ms. Bradel.
Here.
Mr. Detulio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here. Here.
Gotcha. Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Whiterson.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll start our meeting with information reports. Ms. Andracy, please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. So we are pleased to return for the second year the Seneca Valley All-Star Award. The All-Star Award was developed to officially recognize and show appreciation to Seneca Valley classified employees. That includes secretaries, paraprofessionals, custodial, and maintenance employees, as well as cafeteria personnel, along with our bus drivers, who are often the unsung heroes of our schools. This month, we are pleased to announce that our Seneca Valley All-Star Award member is Sue White. She is the cafeteria manager at Ryan Goyer Middle School. Miss White was nominated by Mr. Tony Babusi, who is the Ryan Goyer Middle School principal. Unfortunately, because of a family emergency, Mr. Babusi was unable to join us tonight. However, Tricia Butchley, an RGMS assistant principal, was more than happy to join us for tonight's meeting in sharing his nomination and singing the very much deserved praises of Ms. White. So I would ask Dr. Polano if you could welcome in, oh, there she is, Ms. Tricia Butchley, to share a little bit about you, with you, excuse me, the nomination of Ms. White.
Hi, thank you. First of all, please know that Tony wishes he were here to share these words himself. And in his words, simply stated, Sue is one of the toughest and most professional people I have ever worked with. She's been presented with personal challenges that would break many people, yet she continues to manage the cafeteria with the utmost professionalism and dedication. Managing the cafeteria while short-staffed through all of the challenges of the pandemic alone is a reason enough for recognition. Doing so, though, while facing overwhelming personal challenges is all the more impressive. Sue, I would have to agree. In my four years now at the middle school, I've come to know Sue White as gentle and kind, yet fiercely devoted to family, which is really what we are at Ryan Goyer Middle School, a family. When she heard that Mr. Babusi couldn't be present this evening, Sue said that family is most important and that he needed to be home where his family needed him. It's that same deep devotion that Sue brings to her job. She's a leader in the cafeteria. She treats the students as family and leads her staff to do the same, greeting students, getting to know them, their interests, their favorites, et cetera. While she herself has worry and family heartache, you never see it on Sue's face. Her priority is always serving our students and staff. She wrote to Tony and myself today in an email saying, I have a sign on my wall that I keep at eye level to remind myself daily. It says, leadership isn't about titles, positions, or flow charts. It's about one life influencing another. I try to remember that every day. Sue White certainly does influence lives daily. And she does it graciously with a smile, a kind heart, and impressive dedication. So thank you, Sue, from all of us at RGMS.
Thank you, Mrs. Butchley. I really appreciate that. And I know that Miss White was more than happy to join us this evening, and I appreciate you attending. And I believe you also wanted to say a few words tonight.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you to Tony for nominating me. I was just so surprised and shocked when I got the email. And I have to say that we just get such tremendous support from Tony and Tricia and all of the administration and staff and teachers at our school. I have been an employee of Seneca Valley for over 23 years. I have always enjoyed my job. I've worked in every position in the cafeteria. And I have been manager now for a few years. And although the last several years have been difficult, I try to go into work every day with a positive attitude and to encourage everyone in my cafeteria. Today in particular, I think, was one of the hardest days that we have had. And sometimes I just tell the girls, we're all upright, we're all alive, and every child got fed. So, you know, sometimes it's just those little goals that you have to set every day. But I, I'm just still so shocked at this, that I really don't know what to say, except just thank you. I truly go to work many days on my way, just thanking the Lord for, for my job. Going home at night, thanking Him for the job that I have and for the privileges that, and the blessings that my husband and I have received through, through my job. I've been in food service since I was 16 years old, and it's just what I like to do, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any board members have any comments? Looking around, anyone? Oh, Mr. Peterson, please. And then Mr. Jacobs, I saw you as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. White, I hope you appreciate how important what you do is to the student body at Seneca Valley. We know that hungry kids don't learn well. We also know the kids that aren't well-fed and given a nutritious meal equally have struggles with their, their ability to learn. So I would just hope that you would stick with us for a while yet, that you'll continue the good work, that the cafeterias will be clean and shiny, that the people you work with will be friendly and attentive to the kids. I recently asked Ms. Andracy if she knew how many meals were prepared while the schools were shut down. They don't have that number in front of me, but I know it was well into the six figures. And I'm sure that you are very instrumental in doing that. So your benefit is not just to, to the schools, it's the entire community, and thank you very much for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. Toyo. Ms. White, just two thank yous. One, I love your definition of leadership, you know, influencing one at a time, doing for one what you wish you could do for everybody, so I love everything about that. And I think that's something for us all to keep in mind. And then, two, I have a daughter in RGMS, so I appreciate you feeding her on a daily basis.
You're welcome.
Any other board member? See, I, I'll.
I would like to, Mr. Detulio, on behalf of the administration, Sue, this is the part where the big corporation gives you like $20,000. So I'm going to work, I'm going to work on giving you 20,000 compliments. I don't think anyone completely understands the disruptions. You know, we're keeping the doors open and we're putting smiles on, so people think sometimes this is easy. I walk through our cafeterias, not every day. I can't get to every cafeteria every day. But I am astounded when I hear reports of the supply disruptions, the food disruptions. And you women just keep going. If you hear, well, you're not getting this certain food today, you just switch it up. You just, you're just so nimble. And then you still do it in a way that is just so kind to our children. So I personally want to thank you. I'm gonna work on those 20,000 compliments this week, okay? Thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitell. Any other member or administrator? I know that, and I'll just take the last word, and I'll echo what Mr. Jacobs said. You have fed my children over your past 23 years, you know, all of them. So they, they've been fed, it's been clean, it's been healthy. And that doesn't help happen without, you know, folks like you willing to do that behind the scenes. And, and let's be honest, kids grumble, you know, they never, you know, the food's never perfect for them, but it's always nutritional, it's always hot, in my opinion, it's awesome. But, you know, they're gonna complain when they can complain, but you, you guys all take it in stride, and you give them a smile. And, and let's be honest, they really like it. At the end of the day, they're still eating it, and they're, they're still enjoying it. And they like everything you, you do with it. And, you know, the Dr. Vitell's point about being nimble and being able to react when things don't go as planned, you folks do it seamlessly, and you don't get enough credit for it, you never do. So this 20,000 compliments, I wish we could do the, the corporation big, you know, gift. But, you know, our, our thanks and our, you know, appreciation of you and everyone that you guide is, is what we can offer, so we'll do that instead.
Thank you.
One last chance for any other board member. Ms. White, thank you very much again, and, you know, we'll come in and have lunch sometime.
Okay.
Thank you. I will share that we will be stopping everybody to see Ms. White tomorrow with a gift and a swag bag, not full of $20,000, but lots of Seneca Valley items that you can wear while, while working at Seneca Valley. So we will be sure to get some photos too and share that out with our public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Andracy, we'll, we'll go back to you then.
Absolutely. So next item under dates to remember, we have three dates coming up. October 2nd is an SAT test date at Seneca Valley. October 2nd is National Custodian Workers' Recognition Day. And then October 4th is a school board work session meeting, which begins at 7:00 PM. And, Mr. President, before we move on to Ms. Mersing's Foundation Quarterly Report, I would first like to go back to the October 2nd date of the National Custodian Workers' Recognition Day, because we won't be returning for our next board meeting until after this date. I would like to take time now to put some emphasis and recognize our custodians and our maintenance crew here at Seneca Valley. And Mr. Brandy Miller is joining us. He is our Buildings and Grounds Director. And he agreed with me that it would be the perfect time to thank these men and women for their work in our schools, especially during this time of the pandemic. So I would like to introduce and welcome in Mr. Miller to the conversation to help with this recognition. So, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Andracy. I, I too am very thankful and appreciative of our Seneca Valley School District Maintenance and Custodial Staff that currently has 33 members, ranging from one month to 35-plus years here at Seneca Valley. These men and women work very hard to keep all of our buildings and grounds clean and safe for all of our students, staff, and visitors. I would now like to recognize each of our members by name, starting off with Rick Duff, who has a whole one month of service here at Seneca Valley, Ryan Healy with six months, Larry Bell, 18 months, Ben Taylor, one year, Kevin Spring, 13 months, Angela Bivens, 17 months, Diane Taylor, 18 months, Danielle McGill, Barb Buchanan, and Rhonda Schwartz, all with two years, Ken Buchanan with two years and eight months, Will Schwartz with four years, Lon Buchanan with five years and two months, as well as David Visconti, also five years, two months, Bob Buchanan with five and a half years, Dennis Cole with seven years, William McCracken with nine years and two months, Tom Buchanan with 10 years, Zach McGill, 10 years, two months, Steve Trentis, 10 years, 10 months, Greg Johns, 14 years and 10 months, Rick Grubb, 15 years and two months, as well as John Solia with 15 years and two months, Jimmy Blons with 15 years and three months, Stu Visconti with 18 years and one month, Jerry Chura, 19 years, seven months, David Bott, 21 years as of today, Robert Jacobs, 22 years, nine months, Patty Scherz, 23 years and two months, Troy Watson, 24 years, Tommy, Tom McClellan, 32 years, one month. And sitting at the top of our list, our maintenance man at the Intermediate High School, Dan McGill with 35 years and one month, going strong. We are honored to recognize these fine men and women. I would now like to introduce the President of the Seneca Valley Custodial Association, Mr. Stuart Visconti. Stu, if you could say a few words?
Well, most of you don't know me, but my name is Stuart Visconti, and I'm the current president of the Custodial ESP for the Seneca Valley School District. I would like to, at this time, to thank the Seneca Valley School Board and District Administration on behalf of our members for the patience and support that our department members have received these past 18 months during these difficult and trying times. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Stu. Any board members have any comments? Mr. Peterson, I saw you turned your mic off. Am I taking it as a, you have a comment, sir? No. Well, I, I guess, you know, I, I'm gonna jump in then, and, Stu, I want to thank you. You know, we should be thanking you for everything you guys have done. You know, coming into the pandemic, you know, you guys were doing all the work anyway, right? And then we, and, and you made it seamless, and, you know, it, it's a shame that the more people in the public don't know who, who you are. They know who their kids' teachers are, but they don't necessarily know all of you folks that are making sure that, you know, the school is safe and clean for, for all the, the kids that come in. And then, you know, when the pandemic came, we said to you folks, okay, now let's make sure that we go over and above when we clean. Let's make sure that we're, oh, here's a mister that was supposed to work one way and didn't. And then you guys had to engineer those things to work. You know, duct tape and baling wire and whatever else you had to do to make sure that you had those working to disinfect not only the classrooms, the cafeterias, you know, even, you know, in the beginning of all this, you know, the outside areas that you were worried about as well. You folks didn't complain, you, you got in there, you got it done, and you made sure that our, our classrooms were safe for the, the kids, you know, that were attending. So we appreciate everything you've done, you know, the hard work you put in, the innovation you put in to doing the job. And not just you, but, but everyone, you know, on the custodial staff, you know, I, I've met some of you, you know, late nights, you know, because you're there, you know, closing down the buildings after, you know, basketball or, or whatever, you know, I've gotten a chat with a few of you folks, but not enough of you. You know, there's 30, over 30 of you. I maybe have had conversations with half a dozen of you. You know, unfortunately, you are the unsung and unknown heroes of our district. So I just want to point out that, you know, even though we don't always say thank you, we do mean it from the bottom of our heart. So thank you for everything you, you, and all of your folks do for our district.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Detulio, if I may, on behalf of the administration, I personally want to thank Stu. I've personally watched him sweating in a building and running from door to door fixing things. So, you know, I see it all the time. This weekend, I received personal correspondence from Wayne Rasha, for those of you that know Wayne. And he's very, first of all, he's a retired teacher, but he also, you know, he bleeds blue and black for sure. He is one of Seneca Valley's biggest fans. He was a coach for us. His children came through Seneca Valley, and he wanted me to personally know that Tom Buchanan could not have been more accommodating in helping them with the Sports Hall of Fame this weekend. And at one point, the linens for the Sports Hall of Fame accidentally got thrown in the trash, and someone from our custodian maintenance staff dug through the trash to pick those out because someone on the committee accidentally threw them away. And Wayne wanted me to know that's the kind of above and beyond that our custodian maintenance staff do all the time. I get these types of compliments all the time. But tonight, I have a chance to share that with you, Stu, and if you would share that with your team as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I will, most definitely.
Taking myself off mute. Any other board members have any comments? Look around one last time. I don't see anyone else. So, Stu, again, thank you very much, and I'm, I'm glad that we got to, to say thank you today, and we didn't miss it for next month. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
You too. So, Ms. Andracy, did you have any other information update?
My apologies. She'll be joining us in just one moment, but if technical difficulties.
Not a problem. We can, we can wait a second for that.
I, I can take over for her.
Okay.
So I don't believe she had any other dates to remember. And now we can move on, and I'd like to introduce Ms. Annie Mersing. She is our Director of Development, and she is helping us to lead the foundation, the Seneca Valley Foundation. And now we'd ask her to give a quarterly report for the public and for our board members. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight to talk about the incredible things going on with the Seneca Valley Foundation. As you know, the foundation is the nonprofit arm of the district that raises funds for extras, things the budget cannot support, but things that set Seneca Valley apart from other schools. Over the past few months, many, many people and companies have generously supported us, and I want to take this opportunity to publicly thank them all. I'll start with the success of our Ninth Annual Gift of Hope Golf Classic, which was held on August 5th. This year, we welcomed 124 golfers, 39 sponsors, including gold sponsors Penaflam Industries and Comdoc, and profited $33,000. I'd like to acknowledge this board's involvement, as well as my colleagues and the entire community, whether through volunteering, connecting us with sponsors, golfing, or donating to its success, we truly appreciate all of your help. Next, I'd like to talk about several major donations we recently received, including $10,000 from Jim and Eileen Ruble, dedicated to creating and maintaining a Raider Space Maker Summer Camp for our exceptional students, which was spearheaded by Mr. Steve Fortunato in the senior high. Next was another $10,000 donation from Parag and Ernie Batavia, dedicated to our robotics program and suite, which stands for Seneca's Women Engineering Exploration Team. We also received a donation in the, in the amount of $4,500 from Marathon Petroleum Company, which is formerly Mark West in Evan City, for outdoor learning equipment. Next was a donation in the amount of $4,480 made in memory of Mr. Jamie Thomas, who passed away last spring. These donations have been dedicated to the athletics department, as Mr. Thomas and his family were heavily involved in SB Sports. He left, he left behind wife Laura and two children, Chase and Natalie, as well as parents, Robert and Janice Thomas. Another donation we received was $3,000 by Duquesne Light Company and Miss Catherine Davis, which was dedicated to CVE. And lastly, we received $1,400 contributed in memory of Mr. Jason Worley, who once served on the school board, as you all know, and whom was a foundation trustee at the time of his passing. Mr. Worley was the father of senior high students Emma and Brady, and left behind his partner Christina Coker and parents Kathy Malory and Bill Worley. I again want to thank everyone for these contributions to the foundation and mostly their faith in our mission. Through this generosity, we're able to do so many great things for students and staff. In fact, in the past few months, our trustees have approved funding for things like tents for outdoor learning at the elementary schools, as well as a tent for the senior high homecoming dance coming up. In partnership with Marathon Petroleum Company, we acquired 225 soccer chairs for the secondary campus to allow for students and staffs to grab one to get outside more, whether for class or for lunchtime. We approved funding for a sensory path and CVE's play area to complement the awesome work being done over there by Project Playground. We approved funding for mindfulness training for all staff that will offer guidance and stress management and self-care. And in partnership with Dr. Stephanie Rhodes of Rhodes Orthodontics in Cranberry, Eccles Construction, and Armstrong, we funded the district's Welcome Back event to energize our staff as they came back into the buildings in August. And the last thing I'll mention is our funding of a pre-to-shop store in the senior high school, which will be available to all secondary students in the district. It was created by paraprofessional Michelle Eppinger and Assistant Principal Amanda Mallon. They've just been doing amazing things over there with this store. It will welcome students in need to a real-life shopping experience for clothing and toiletries. Once it's completed, please be on the lookout for information about donating new or gently-used clothing to this worthy cause so that it can continue to run for many, many years. In closing, if anyone is interested in contributing to the foundation or would like to discuss ways to get involved, please never hesitate to reach out to me. My contact info, a link to donate, as well as additional information about the foundation, is available under our page on the district's website. And with that, Mr. President, thank you for your time and all that you and the entire board does for the district.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mersing. Are there any questions or comments for, for Ms. Mersing? Looking around, I don't see anyone. Annie, I'll jump in, you know, thank you as always for everything that you do, leading the foundation. I wish we could, you know, sing your praises, you know, just like what I was saying, you know, with the custodians, you know, you're the unsung heroes, you know, with what you do behind the scenes, raising money, making sure our students have the best of everything. It's so appreciated by, by the board and by the public, even if you don't always hear it. So thank you again, and I'm glad that you were able to get the golf outing, you know, it's great success again. And I'm sorry I missed it. Hopefully, they'll move my Pizer meeting next year, and I'll be able to actually attend. But I, again, thank you very much for everything you've been doing and continue the great work. Thanks.
Well.
All right, we will move on in our agenda to the Robert Morris University All Academy event. Dr. Vitell, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're pleased to announce the representatives from the United States Military Academy at West Point, the U.S. Naval Academy, the U.S. Air Force Academy, and the U.S. Coast Guard Academy, and the U.S. Merchant Marine Academy will be hosting a Military Service Academy Night for students interested in attending one of our nation's service academies. This will occur on Thursday, September 30th, beginning at 6:00 PM. And this will be held at Robert Morris University. At the eight-two-five-six University Boulevard, Moon Township, Pennsylvania, it is across from Moon Township High School. All high school students are welcome, not just Seneca Valley. School District students, and we will have more information, I know our counselors have been sharing this with students, but I wanted to make sure that our public was aware as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, are there any questions for Dr. Vitale? Don't, so we'll move on to the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, the PAYS, or PAYS, Dr. Roberts. I believe you have a presentation for us.
Yes, I'll be very brief, thank you, Mr. President. The PA Youth Survey, or PAYS, is conducted at schools across Pennsylvania every odd numbered year. And that survey administration is supported through the PA Department of Education, the PA Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And the PA Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs. The survey has been conducted with students in Pennsylvania for over thirty years. And the survey questions ask students about school climate, violence, depression, bullying, and substance abuse. Student names are not tied to the survey submissions, it's anonymous and confidential. And no student-level data can be obtained from the data set that's collected. The results are reported in aggregate form for the school district, for county and statewide levels. An analysis of the school-wide results allows students to observe local and. I'm sorry, allows school leaders to observe local and regional trends. To give you a little bit of context about the state of Pennsylvania, on Friday, when I looked at the statistics, three hundred and seventy-seven of our five-hundred. PA school districts have indicated that they plan to participate in the PAYS survey, so that's slightly more than seventy-five percent of school districts. The survey will be available and completed by students across the state in grades six, eight, ten, and twelve during the first quarter of the year. At Seneca Valley, we've opted to conduct the survey with our secondary-level students, so students in grades eight, ten, and twelve. And we felt that the questions were not quite age-appropriate for our Seneca Valley students for grade six. Prior to conducting the survey with students, parents in the district in those grades will be notified through school messenger about the survey. They'll have the opportunity to view the questions, and will have the opportunity to decline for their child to participate in the survey if they desire. Participation, of course, is voluntary, and students during this survey session may skip questions that they don't understand or don't wish to answer. As I mentioned before, parents that wish to decline for their students to participate simply will let their wishes be known. To the building survey coordinator, who's the assistant principal at the various buildings. The questions are standardized across the state, and allow law enforcement, job protective services, and other needs and tra- and trends to be observed. For you as board members and for the public, the major topics include antisocial behaviors, community and school climate and safety. Alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, social and emotional health, and risk and protective factors. Overall, four Butler County school districts are participating in the survey, they include Butler Area, Karn City Area. Monata and Seneca Valley. In the past, the survey has validated some of the work that we've been doing related to prevent substance abuse. For example, the results from the two thousand nineteen PAYS survey supported the needs for us to address vaping among Seneca Valley teens. Also, in two thousand nineteen, you may remember that we obtained a grant from the Highmark Foundation related to vaping prevention. County government also uses the statistics and obtains funding for regional prevention programs related to child and teen substance abuse. As I mentioned previously, the information will be sent to parents and guardians through school messenger in the month of October. And the message will include a link for more information and the opportunity for parents and guardians to opt out for their child to participate. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, are there any questions for Dr. Roberts? Looking around, and I am, oh wait, Ms. Bradel, please.
My only question is, will the results be shared with us sometime later in the year?
Yeah, so the district receives preliminary information in December, and then the full report. Which includes comparisons to county and statewide numbers that comes next April, that's the report that we really look at because. It allows us to see not just Seneca Valley, but Seneca Valley in context with, with other districts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradel, any other questions? I don't see any, so Dr. Roberts, thank you very much for the presentation, clarifications. And since there's no more questions, we'll move on to the COVID nineteen update, Dr. Vitale, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, the first data source we look at is publicly available data through the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Specifically for Butler County, the most recent seven-day period, September tenth through the sixteenth. Is compared to the previous seven-day period, September third through the ninth. In Butler County, the difference in confirmed cases, COVID nineteen confirmed cases, in the most recent seven days. We are up ninety-seven cases, the incident rate, that's the most recent seven days per one hundred thousand residents. We are at three hundred and twenty-nine point five. The PCR positivity rate for the most recent seven days is at thirteen point eight percent. The difference in the average daily number of COVID nineteen hospitalizations is up in the county by eleven point five. And I have a report that goes further for Butler County, today, as many of you know, every Monday at two o'clock. I get on a Zoom call with Butler Health doctors, Butler Health System doctors. Every school superintendent in the county is on that call, the Butler County Commissioners are on that call. And we have a representative in emergency medicine, a doctor from UPMC Cranberry. And the report out from Butler Memorial Hospital today was that they have forty-four confirmed patients with COVID in their hospital to date. And they have six in the ICU, they reported sadly five deaths over the weekend, and they did share that. I don't have ages on that, I know that's always a question people have, but that's not something Butler Hospital shares with us, but that is something. We have requested from the Department of Health, and we are hoping to see some of those age breakouts soon, there have been some reported in the media. But we would like to see those on publicly reported data as well. The Seneca Valley numbers today are much better, I'm always careful celebrating though. Because the moment I say that, then they jump up significantly, but I am hopeful, and the numbers in our district today are better than we've seen in several weeks. The active student cases are at sixteen, the students in quarantine are at sixty-six. The active staff cases, we have three, and we wa- we have one staff in quarantine currently. Those are spread out across the district, if you go to our SV COVID nineteen dashboard. You will see the different breakouts per building, and we watch those closely as our nurses do contact tracing with the Department of Health. The next number that you know I've reported out before, and we watch quite closely, is something that. A lot of folks don't watch, and those are our zip code numbers, so let me start by saying the summary. That we have, we pull all, all of the publicly available data, and then we drill down to the county, you heard some of those numbers. The number of new daily cases on a fourteen-day rolling average as of today in Butler County is sitting at one thirteen point six. And then when we drilled down into the zip code data, we are looking at all of our zip codes, Calery, Cranberry Township. Evan City, Harmony, Mars, Renfrew, Zillion Opal, we're looking at fifty-seven new cases in our zip codes throughout the weekend. On nine seventeen, we had twenty-two cases, on nine sixteen, we had forty, on nine fifteen, twenty-three, nine fourteen, ten. And nine thirteen, sixty-four, so we are seeing this data ebb and flow. As far as the other disruptions that COVID is creating in our schools. You, you heard us, you know, honor custodians today, you heard us, you know, honor a really fabulous cafeteria manager, and all of our cafeteria managers are. Are really amazing, what they've done, they've always been good, but what they've done in the last eighteen months has really been above and beyond. What I've heard and seen in, in other locations, we are looking for more cafeteria employees. So if you know of anyone in the community, or if the community's listening, we are hiring bus drivers, we need more bus drivers. Mr. Pearson has collapsed routes, we have double routed, every district in Butler County. And Allegheny County is experiencing this shortage, we need bus drivers, we need cafeteria workers, and we need teacher subs. So I do want to take a moment, especially as we head into October and November. If you have a college degree, you can get what's called an emergency certification in the state of Pennsylvania and sub for us. As a teacher, you can't be in that classroom, you know, consistently and full-time beyond a certain amount. Because it is required in the state of Pennsylvania that you are a content expert, but last year we hired what we call super subs who came in every day. Who were just amazing, and they are in again this year, their title is not super sub, but they're in pretty consistently. And I do want to give a shout out to those folks, who, some of them are emergency certified. That means they have a college degree, and they've gone through a short course about classroom management, and they have all of their clearances. And then others are certified teachers, so please, if you have a college degree or you are a certified teacher, we would love to have you. Because COVID is disrupting staffing, we're hearing about this in a number of hospitals. I mentioned to you on my two o'clock call, the, the Butler Report, the UPMC Report we received. The system, and as you know, the UPMC system is quite large, they have four hundred and seventy COVID patients. Right now, and they have twenty percent of the four hundred and seventy in the ICU, and half of that twenty percent on ventilators. And their, their biggest disruption has been staffing. And they need nurses, and they need more employees, and every system I speak to, businesses, nonprofits, and especially schools, so. You know, our goal has always been to keep our employees and students safe, and to keep the doors open physically. And so I am pleading with the public to please contact our HR department, if you can help us as a teacher sub, even if it's only once a week. Or if you can drive bus for us, or if you can work in our cafeteria, or work as a sub to our custodians. It would be greatly appreciated, and it would be helping out our children, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale, are there any questions for Dr. Vitale from our update? As I look around, I am not seeing any hands being raised. So we will move on in our agenda. In the backup, you will find the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, athletics. Food services, tax collection reports, and capital project funds, I'm sure if you had any questions, you already directed those to Ms. Burton. We're entering now to our public comment portion of our meeting. It's clarification, I would like to read some guidelines that we have for public comments, as we're doing this virtually, something that's going to be a little more. Concerning of, you know, how we do things, so I know folks that have signed up have read this, but just for everyone else that's listening, you know, there are some policies that we follow. So I just wanted to go through those, just so everyone's aware. Board policy allows for thirty minutes of public comment, with each speaker allowed up to four minutes, we have extended that to one hour. For tonight, and allowed fifteen speakers to register. Per our policy, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, in this case, that's me, and no participant may address or question board members individually. The public comment portion is just that, an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, information, opinions on upcoming board votes. Please address the board with respect and stability, just as you would expect to be treated in your home or workplace, and just as we expect students to act in our classrooms. This board has done their very best to keep politics out of the boardroom and away from our school board agenda business, however, recently people have come to the microphone campaigning. This is not where we campaign, this is where we conduct our official school business. So I would ask that our speakers tonight refrain from anything involving elections or campaigns. I will have a timer set, and it will go off at three-thirty as a signal to the speaker to wrap up their comments. And at four minutes, I'll let the speaker know that they've reached their limit as a second indicator to complete their statement. And finally, in accordance with our policy, the presiding officer, again, that is me, may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy. Personally-directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, so I just wanted to. Introduce our public comment session with that guideline, and right now I'm going to look to Dr. Polano. To help me out on introducing our speakers as we go through the list, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, as you mentioned previously, we have fifteen individuals registered to speak this evening. I will call upon each one of you, and I apologize in advance, should I mispronounce your name. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Erin McLeimans. Ms. McLeimans, you should now have the option to unmute your audio and address the board.
Thank you, hello, my name is Erin McLeimans, as I start any speech to the board, I want to commend you for your efforts during what will surely go down in history. As an incredibly challenging and unique time, I appreciate you doing all that you do. I'm going to have to modify my speech tonight, because I was going to be speaking about something that is now not allowed. My first comment is to address Mr. DeTulio's comment from last week, where he was upset that the community was speaking about issues without addressing him first. I wanted to point out that our First Amendment rights under the Constitution of the United States of America protect our freedom of speech, and that's a given. As I am campaigning for school board, I will try to keep my comments about changes that I feel need to be made with the current board, and you can read between the lines on this. I believe that there is very little accessibility. To the board, and that there should be better lines of open communication, such as setting up personal websites. Facebook pages, or creating emails where constituents can very clearly and directly reach their elected school board member. It should not be a challenging task to get a hold of our school board members to, to express our opinions and thoughts. There should be a lot more accessibility. I also believe that the Seneca Valley School District should employ free and simple surveys. Either through school board members to determine how their constituents feel, or as a general population. I know that we talk a lot about data, we hear a lot of data points, but we never really hear a lot of data and information coming back from the board. About how the community feels, we get very vague references of, oh, it was pretty equal, or we've heard how the community feels. I would like data validation and quantification via surveys to see how the. How the community really feels on key pivotal issues, then there would be no need for write-to-know requests, which speaking of. I am still waiting on all the emails from the district on the masking issue, so we can see the number for and against, and be able to quantify how the community truly felt. Instead of getting vague references, it's been over thirty days for me, which I think is an appropriate time. We live in a data-driven society, and we should be bringing that transparency by using data, there's simply no excuse not to. Also, in the spirit of transparency, we've heard a lot of, there has been a discussion in executive meetings, and then you vote. I think all of this information should be shared, and the community should have a chance to provide feedback. These are our children and our tax dollars, and we need to understand what is going on before it's voted on, there's been several instances in the past. Particularly the FID days, the flexible instruction days, which I think we can all agree should be done away with, as since we have. A long history of the pandemic and the ability to have remote learning. As well as the change in start time for students, which was truly detrimental to working parents, who now were not able to get to their jobs later. Or had to find childcare at an additional cost. Lastly, we need to evaluate our teachers and quantify the feedback on these teachers. How many years have we all in the community known that we never want our kids to have this teacher or that teacher? Year after year, throne desk after throne desk, these teachers remain employed by the Seneca Valley School District. And this is unacceptable, as someone who works in corporate America, this behavior would never be tolerated. Let's talk about not giving kids letter grades, also not tolerated in the world, real world. We are setting our children up for failure, because in the real world, we are evaluated and rewarded or penalized based on our performance. And that is meant to. There are no participation awards in the real world, you either succeed or you don't, and there are clear guidelines meant to motivate you and evaluate your performance. It doesn't, you're teaching kids, it doesn't pay to study or get ahead, because there are no consequences if you fail or underperform. I think I'm going to wrap that up so that everybody else has time to speak. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Ms. Andrea Tucker. Ms. Tucker, you should have the option to unmute your audio and address the board.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd also like to thank the members of our school board, school and district administrators, and all teachers and other staff for all you've done to keep our children in school in person, five days a week, as safely as possible so far this year. I'm so grateful for your decision to be proactive before the state required masking, starting the year off with consistency and an added layer of protection our students were fortunate to have, rather than starting with an experiment. You have proven yourselves, and by extension, this district, to be forward-thinking when it comes to many issues over the years, including responsibly protecting students during a global pandemic. You're also continuing to show this by holding virtual school board meetings. When several parents were disappointed that the first meeting of this school year was in-person only, the board and administrators worked quickly to restore a live-streamed option for the next meeting. And the move of the September meetings to only format shows more of your proactive approach to safety and your commitment to moving on with the business of running a school district, avoiding the chaos sadly erupting in districts throughout the country. Tonight, I want to ask that you consider permanently offering live-streamed and recorded school board meetings, including the ability for community members to speak virtually. When the COVID nineteen pandemic closed our schools in 2020, this board opened for many of us the very first opportunity to attend school board meetings because for a number of different reasons for each of us, an in-person meeting on a weeknight just wouldn't be possible to attend. Let's take your powerful message of inclusivity beyond the pandemic. Offering live streaming is inclusive of and accessible to a more diverse population than just in-person meetings. Live streaming and recording meetings sends a welcoming message to populations including disabled, neurodiverse, chronically ill, and immunocompromised community members, single parents, parents who travel or work during the meeting time or whose spouses do, concerned alumni who might live out of the area, and any others who can't make it to in-person meetings. And allowing these attendees to speak virtually says their voices matter. All members of the community deserve the ability to share their concerns and timely access to the invaluable information shared at school board meetings. This includes recording and posting these meetings since meeting minutes aren't posted until they're approved the next month. For those speakers who have recently said they feel there's a lack of transparency, being able to review past meetings should help. I understand there are budgetary concerns with the current method of live streaming and recording, but since live streaming has become popular across so many different industries, I'm hopeful that with further investigation, the district will be able to identify and implement a more cost-effective option. Beyond expenses, live streaming tells those who can't attend meetings in person that they are worth it. Live streaming is a wonderful accommodation that improves accessibility and inclusivity for district residents who cannot attend meetings in person, in line with the district's diversity committee's mission and commitment to diversity, whether that diversity is visible or invisible. Thank you once again for your time and for all you have done and continue to do.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Dr. Peter Silves. Dr. Silves, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board.
Thank you. I want to start this off by noting that the first half hour of this meeting was mostly about staffing. And that Dr. Vitale's words, particularly about community numbers, are sobering because really in this day and age, COVID is a war of attrition. It's like a national game of freeze tag between quarantining children and their parents and the trickle-down effect it has on society, both particularly in manufacturing, service, education, retail, but in healthcare too. There was something really missing in the last two months of meetings as various groups of parents have really debated how to handle COVID. That was gratitude. My oldest daughter graduated with the class of 2021. And I know that you pulled off a small miracle. Between March and June, you managed to salvage a school year. A year ago, there was debate between cohort, remote, full in person, and how do we do this? And there were times that that was a tug of war. But nobody gives the board or the district credit for saying you salvaged the school year. And you had the momentum to start a school year properly. I'm a physician. Yes, I could I could talk about medical things. I don't have to. Dr. Vitale said everything that's relevant right now. I guess what I'm saying right now is this time period is difficult because the pros are a majority of our adults, staff, and teachers, visitors are vaccinated. Plurality of our students, the adolescents, are vaccinated. Treatments are good. We're in a much different place than we were a year ago. The con is it's still profoundly contagious. And the attrition to sap away staffing and employment and parents and daycare is still there. You guys made the blueprint for controlling this, and you should be proud of yourselves. What we would have been grateful for three or four months ago, we're really fighting over small details, particularly masking. You know what? There's a reality. When numbers are high in the community, the chance of an asymptomatic typhoid mary-type spreading case into the school is real. And most businesses, churches, civic organizations have gone along with the recommendation of saying, when cases are high, you should mask whether you're vaccinated or not. And guess what? When cases are low, you can take the mask off. I was tempted to say that you deserved to have a real graduation. The school district earned it through its efforts and the cooperation of the students. I do also want to say that over certain issues, I can be a single-issue crank. One year ago, I was very, very much for cohorting and looking at numbers. Conditions are different now, and I'm very humble about saying you are doing a fantastic job. There may be members of the school board with whom I've had disagreements. I would never, ever write in myself or support a write-in simply to go after a person or make ad hominem attacks when being a school board member means being versed in a lot of things, visible in the community, accessible, and flexible in matters of logistics, budgeting, and public relations. You fulfill a special purpose, and I respect you even when I disagree with you. Lastly, again, I must emphasize, Seneca made the blueprint, and the year started out well. We have dozens of cases as opposed to hundreds of cases. And the whole purpose of these meetings, this whole past year now, has been how do we keep school open, mitigate spread within the school and within the community? Because after all, you can't catch COVID without getting it from someone. I would also say there has been many pleas toward the term freedom. And I do want to reiterate, this is shared responsibility. Our grandparents' generation shouldn't meet steel, gas, rubber. They obeyed blackout orders to essentially keep their neighbors safe and win a war. Our grandparents' generation avoided the park, the pool, the civic center, the school even, when polio was bad. This is not about freedom. This is about cooperation and shared sacrifice. And again, my daughter is now in college. We got to celebrate and participate in a real graduation. You have my gratitude, and I wish people could have the cooperative spirit that you display most nights that you meet. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Mr. Mike Vardaro. Mr. Vardaro, you should now have the option to unmute your mic to address the board.
Thank you. I've watched the last two board meetings, which includes a seven-two vote for the mask mandate. I'm so proud to be represented by a board who had the courage to vote for a controversial rule. And I congratulate all of you who listened to the facts, the administration's recommendations, and some excellent speakers before voting. What has absolutely appalled me is the bitter criticism the board has received for that vote. Some speakers at the following meeting resorted to threats. This is ridiculous considering all your responsibilities and all your critical decisions you make. You deserve better, and it's encouraging that are many who support you with letters, speaking at meetings, and votes in November. I have two grandchildren in grades one and three, and I follow what's going on extremely closely. As a former financial manager, I often face difficult, no-win decisions with less information available than I would normally have. I was driven by what is the right thing to do and making the best decision when faced with a non-perfect options, knowing those decisions would result in negative and extreme reactions. That's exactly what I watched all of you do, and I was proud to have a board that made the best decision they could under very difficult circumstances. I saw seven courageous people cast a vote that was going to cause them nothing but grief. And I saw all nine board members vote their conscience, and I congratulate you for your votes. All nine of you board members deserve to be re-elected based on what you've been doing for the students in the school district. Some of you will be facing one-issue candidates who are not capable of handling the tasks required to run a large school district. You have a wonderful administration that you listen to. It's easy for the public not to see or understand your tremendous responsibility. With your vote, you did everything you could to offer maximum protection to the children. You took a proactive stand that many districts did not. The consequences of you not voting for mandates could have led to tragic circumstances. What sense would it have made to send children to school for two weeks unmasked, and after a few came down with COVID, then mask mandate? You were not offered a flawless option. You made the best choice available, which is what I expect of good decision-makers. Your decision to mandate masks offers the only protection that the young children who cannot be vaccinated have. They are defenseless, and even if they wore a mask themselves, without your mandate, they would be protecting others but not themselves. Your vote is the only step in the right direction that could have made, especially for younger children and children with special needs and weakened immune systems. You made the best possible decision under less-than-ideal circumstances in order to maximize the chances of the students being in school as much as possible, which all sides agree on. The talk about kids not being free to breathe is not giving the children enough credit. Last year, I picked my granddaughter up after kindergarten, and I never saw one child waiting for a ride having a problem with their mask. And that was after wearing it for over three hours on the bus and at school. Let's give children some credit instead of parents pushing their own feelings on them. Those children are capable of much more than our adults, us adults, think they are. Lastly, a few speakers brought up the Bible as a reason not to wear masks and mentioned that only children who had cancer died from COVID. That is the least Christian comment I have ever heard. Survival of the fittest is not consistent with any religion that I'm aware of, and making sacrifices for those in need has always been a staple of any religion. If being a little uncomfortable wearing a mask saves even one child from death, serious medical concerns or mental anguish because their disabilities cannot be addressed through remote learning, then that discomfort was well worth it. We need to continue to make personal sacrifices to help those with unseen needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Ms. Megan Ashid. Ms. Ashid, you should now have the option to unmute your audio to address the board.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Megan Ashid. I have two children currently in elementary school, and a third will be joining the district next year. As a parent and healthcare worker, I would like to thank the current school board members and Dr. Vitale for navigating us through the pandemic and investing in our future. For example, with one of my children on swim team and another participating in lessons offered by the team, the recent building and opening of the Seneca Valley Aquatic Center has been such a positive impact, both personally and for the community. In the pandemic environment where there has been so much sadness and uncertainty, it is refreshing and exciting to be able to celebrate something positive. For my one child who is on a 504, succeeding academically involves hours and hours of hard work and dedication, and the consistent support and positive feedback received by the coaches and teammates has translated into increased confidence, drive, and determination to dedicate the necessary time to be successful in the classroom so he can be part of the swim team. The new aquatic center and its success would not have been possible without our fantastic dedicated coaches and senior swimmers. They have partnered with the school district to find ways to keep the team going, whether it's through virtual dryland training or in person at the pool while following safety precautions. I also wanted to recognize our outstanding senior group of Seneca Valley swimmers who have volunteered their time to coach the younger swimmers and teach swim lessons for the community. Likewise, I want to thank the current school board members for investing in our community and our schools by, for example, serving meals and even driving a school bus to get our kids to in-person learning. In-person learning is one area, I think, as an entire community, we can agree on. We want in-person learning, and we have been able to continue in-person learning due to this current school board paying attention to the COVID nineteen transmission rates, listening to our local healthcare professionals and hospitals, and making proactive preventative responsible decisions. My children have expressed repeatedly that it is very difficult for them to learn virtually, and learning in person is what they need. When I asked them about wearing a mask, their responses have been, it's no big deal to wear a mask. I just want to be in school. As a healthcare professional, I do want to remind the community that wearing a mask protects you from hurting others. In this case, you are protecting our unvaccinated children and our immunocompromised. I'd like to challenge everyone just to think outside themselves and think of others. You know, time is the most valuable asset we have, and we want our time on earth to be spent in good health and happiness. And in working together, we can unite to continue our goal of in-person learning by making responsible decisions. I grew up in a military area where there was no, where there was a constant reminder of many of our elderly were drafted into war, and they had no choice. They personally sacrificed so much for freedoms we enjoy today. So please keep this in mind when you're being asked to do something simple like wear a mask to protect those around you. If you would like real freedom and true freedom to live without the virus versus coexisting with it, I beg and ask that you continue to combat COVID nineteen by following all of the recommended measures. Get vaccinated, wear a mask when indoors, socially distance, and have excellent hand hygiene. Imagine if those who lived during polio had chosen not to take similar measures. We would be living in a very different existence today. All the Seneca Valley employees and school board have sacrificed in so many ways to support our children, community, and schools. Whether our current board members have children in the school district or not, they have shown through their actions and words that they genuinely care about our current students in school and also about our future students in school. I am confident the current school board members will continue to invest in our community and school as evidenced by the Ermenkrast Elementary Middle School being currently under construction. Thank you for giving me four minutes of your time. I hope all those listening will take the time to consider others in the future and work in a united civil way to achieve positive outcomes for our students, school, and community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Mr. John Saganic. Mr. Saganic, you should now have the option to unmute your audio to address the board.
Thank you. I'm John Saganic, and I have, I currently have two children in the school district. Next year, a third child will be entering kindergarten. Firstly, I'd like to thank the board for their dedication to our community. We all know that it's a difficult job, and the worst pandemic in one hundred years has certainly made it tougher. I'd like to remind everyone too that board members, while elected, volunteer their time generously, oftentimes in excess of forty hours per month, depending on the circumstances. And the circumstances have been quite difficult over the past year and a half. Additionally, a thank you goes out to teachers, administrators, school nurses, facilities maintenance, custodial staff, lunch teams, so many others. The pandemic has obviously made everybody's job tougher. And as mentioned earlier, they've risen to the challenge. So those efforts are very much appreciated. So I've noticed that some in our community have downplayed the COVID-related deaths of individuals with comorbidities and of children. So I've noticed that some in our community have downplayed the COVID-related deaths of individuals with comorbidities and of children. Statements such as only four hundred children have died or. People that die have died of pre-existing conditions of these types of statements have become commonplace among some in our community. But make no mistake about it, folks, we should reject such sentiments unequivocally. The folks in our communities that have comorbidities, whether adults or children, are not expendable. And now more than ever, they need to know that many of us have their backs and will advocate on their behalf. If we normalize the deaths of vulnerable citizens, we must question whether or not we still live in a civilized society. Keeping our humanity is a choice, and I hope that most of us choose wisely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Give me a second. Dr. Plano.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Mr. Kevin Strayhorn. One moment. Okay, Mr. Strayhorn, you should now have the option to unmute your mic and address the board.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief on my speaking portion. One, the punctuality was very disrespectful. You know, I come from a military background. You have beyond time to show respect and professionalism. So that's number one. Number two. I would assume when the state, federal and state government mandates vaccines, you will support that. So I'll assume that. And lastly. It has nothing to do with the mask or vaccines. It has to do with my seven-year-old daughter. Getting a booklet about, you know, about Ruby during the. Historical event of the first black girl going to school, being escorted and all that. In the booklet, I showed the president of the board this. It showed that. White people is being labeled as a race to be angry and mean toward Ruby in a second grade environment. For a seven-year-old. So. You know, Dr. Vitale, you have different standards in your school system where the booklet is not being taught at another school. So you, you need to really look at the teachers teaching, especially very impressionable children. During this time and age. So. When you get this information from Haynes Elementary. Cause I wrote emails to the principal and the teacher. This is unacceptable language and verbiage to a seven-year-old. So. That is a very appalling and very concerning where this school district is going to lead in the future. So. It needs to be age appropriate and as a parent, for my daughter to be mixed. You know, what's going to happen when my daughter comes home and says, you know, hey mommy, what about white people? Don't be so mean to a black people or Orientals and stuff like that. That's not acceptable. You need to really look at your education system and your, and your teaching staff and what kind of. Material that they propose to the children. So another thing. If you guys really are serious about being equitable, just look at your board. Just look at yourselves on your board. If you're really serious about that. Guess what? There needs to be some great changes on that board. So in two thousand twenty-three, I'll be running against Susan to take that spot. All right. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Ms. Angela Pretty. You should now have the option to unmute your mic and address the board.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Angela Pretty. I have two daughters who attain, attend Hayne Elementary in the fourth and third grades. I would like to sincerely thank the board and district staff for taking the safety of our children seriously. Obviously, we had all hoped that June marked a turning point, the end of the pandemic. But the Delta variant threw us an unexpected curveball. And despite significant pressure and skillful disinformation campaigns, you chose to act in the best interest of our children, even in the absence of a mandate. We see now with the closure of other schools in our region and an overwhelmed healthcare system that you made the correct decision. I am speaking tonight as the parent of a child with a disability. My fourth grader Brynlee has Down syndrome. Additionally, she carries the diagnoses of autism spectrum disorder, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. Oppositional defiance disorder and apraxia of speech, meaning she is mostly non-verbal. To some of you have spoken over the last couple of weeks, she is one of the dispensable ones. I realized that my parenting journey has differed from many others in the district. For some children who have not dealt with a variety of medical and therapeutic interventions throughout their lives. Wearing a mask to prevent disease may seem like a huge deal. I assure you it is not. While I realize that there are real sensory disorders that make mask wearing impossible for some children. My personal experience in the disability community is that the vast majority of children can easily adapt. To mask wearing if the adults around them support the behavior. It takes patience, encouragement, support and understanding from the parent's side. While we can all agree that masks can be kind of annoying, so can quarantine. Quarantine can be incredibly inconvenient, especially for parents who work outside the home. Our family knows this from experience. However, preventable illness and hospitalizations are far worse than the minor mitigation efforts that are being asked of us at this time. My daughter was placed into quarantine on the first fourth day of class this year due to exposure to a positive student within the classroom. I would like to thank the teachers, administrators and nurses at Hayne Elementary. For swift action, placing my child into quarantine for the protection of both herself and for other students. We are incredibly thankful to the parents who kept their child home when illness was noted. Had their child tested and reported to the school as soon as a positive was received. I also want to recognize the efforts of the school nursing staff. I can't fathom the difficult situations they are placed into and the extraordinary measures. They are performing that are outside of anything most of us could have imagined. The staff and school nurses were prompt to address my concerns and answer my question and Hayne staff deserves to be recognized for this. As I mentioned before, to some of you, my daughter is one of the dispensable ones. But I'm here to tell you today that my child is not dispensable. Not one single child is dispensable. While I know that many like to point out only the vulnerable. Or only those with pre-existing conditions die. As the parent of an obviously vulnerable child, I take issue with that statement. I would also like to point out that many children have pre-existing conditions. Some like obesity are easy to see, others like heart conditions may not be apparent until the child contracts the virus. It sometimes takes years of exposure to environmental factors, changes in metabolism and chemistry within the body for the most common conditions to surface. My point is that anyone listening tonight stands just as good of a chance that your child has a pre-existing condition. But it hasn't been diagnosed yet. What parent wants to take that risk? Additionally, with hospitals filling up, even healthy adventurous children are risk of not getting the care they need. If they become injured or seriously ill for something other than COVID. While I know that some parents continue to, continue to openly push back against mitigation efforts. I am also aware that some are trying to work around the. That their child has an illness or disability that is a contraindication to these efforts. This is a slap in the face to every parent who has spent years working through the red tape of getting accommodations for their truly disabled child. Disability is not a joke and I hope that the district will not permit this behavior. I would like to thank the board for your continued efforts to vet all requests critically and responsibly. As we know you have been doing thus far. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Mr. Nick Brower. Mr. Brower, you now have the option to unmute your audio to address the board.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very kindly. Hello and good evening to the Seneca Valley School Board and assembled community. I am Nick Brower, father of two children currently within the district. I am here to thank each and all the school board for your volunteer service to the Seneca Valley students. It's because of your willingness to take on this difficult unpaid role that. Seneca Valley School District is becoming a leader in academic and extension education programs. As measured by the PA, by PA State and US metrics. Your work assures a sound and financially viable public school district. The Seneca Valley School District, you each support and build upon each day. Is a reflected micro, ah, microcosm of the American experiment that requires. Varyed people and ideas from across all social and economic spectrums. The US founding fathers and their successors have relied upon open communication and cooperation. To grow and build our nation and communities. This school board envelops and facilitates these. Thus assuring our students and students and environment that fosters learning. The Seneca Valley Public School District has kept our school buildings open. For attendance despite global, national and local challenges. A community and thriving public school system that excels in student productivity and student growth. Needs and requires a place for student intellectual activities. Ours is a community and public school district, not just for the squeaky wheels, but for all resident students and their families. My family and all families that live within the Seneca Valley School District experience and appreciate your personal investments of hundreds of hours to make. Make our districts shine. We know you've gone far beyond the expected ten hours a month for volunteer effort to stay up to date with relevant, relevant educational, financial and social requirements for the school district. I appreciate your teamwork to reach that most American of outputs cooperation. Through your cooperation, you assure that the bulk of the students and families of the public school district develop strong bodies and mind. It is true that I might not align with each of the board's resolutions, but. This is a board of individuals representing regions within the community. I have learned a lot, a lot about the makeup of the school board over the last two and a half years. And now know we have nine regions where I honestly didn't before. Represented by many different demographics, by the very nature of the diversity of these regions you each represent. And through self-education and guidance by recognized experts in fields where you are not. The Seneca Valley Board continually cooperates and delivers for this school district. For those, for those of you who are coming up for reelection, members of the community and the regions you represent are very much looking forward to seeing you retain your board position on November second.
Mr. Brower, please refrain from campaigning.
My apologies, sir. It will speak to the body of work that you have all done. To assure equality, safety and growth for each of our students during dramatic stressful and unique times of our lives for these young people. Your work touches on the past, present and future. I as an individual, thank you. We also, the community also looks forward to continuing to work with all board members. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for volunteering. God bless you and God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Ms. Selena Smith. Ms. Smith, you should. You should now have the option to unmute your mic and address the board.
Thank you very much. My, uh, my son and I have been avid readers since he was a baby and we started with baby books and then. Went on to short children's stories and then one day when he saw me reading a book after his story time had ended, he said. Read me that book. So we started into chapter books. And now he's in kindergarten and we're now reading book six, Harry Potter and the Half-Blood Prince. And I thought that his reading would hopefully take off that last year, but unfortunately the reading strategies my son learned in kindergarten. Were to memorize a lot of words. Look at the picture and guess the word or skip the word if he didn't know it. And then when he can't read words, when we're having reading practice, he gets upset and we end up in this repetitive struggle. And it's really starting to kill his love of reading. Now, we all probably know that people who struggle with reading are more likely to drop out of school, end up in criminal justice system and live in poverty. Um, in the PA Core standards, I went through them and. Reading high frequency sight words is composed of a single bullet in the PA Core standards. Yet it felt like to me much of the year was spent on these sight words. My son, I, I went back and asked the teacher and he was expected to memorize fifty-four sight words last year. And the sight word instruction began before they had gotten through all the phonics and the alphabet. And the sight word instruction, because it was online a lot of times, it didn't include phonemic deconstruction of those words. It was pure memorization. Now kids have to crack the writing code before they become proficient readers, which is what phonics is supposed to help with. I feel that we need the renewed focus on phonemic awareness instruction in kindergarten. And throughout the formative years to develop our students into stronger readers. And this position is supported by many studies and intellectual centers. I looked up a few. The Iowa Reading Research Center says that to prevent students from becoming reliant on the ineffective practice. Of memorizing lists of words, the instruction should be delivered in small doses, the instruction being sight words. It should be delivered in small doses. It has less than ten minutes and occur alongside systematic phonics instruction. When implementing effective reading instruction, only a small set of words need be taught as sight words. I'm not sure that fifty-four words can be categorized as a small set of words for a five, six-year-old. Reading Rockets, which is an organization that helps kids with reading, they recommend teaching ten to fifteen. Pre-reading high-frequency words, but only starting those after students know all of the letter names. And they further recommend that these be the words that are carefully selected. So they're the essential words that are not decodable using phonics. So words such as at, can, had, words that you can easily sound out, don't need to be taught as. Sight words by students. There's no reason for them to memorize them. They can read them by sounding them out. Um, I plan to attend the meeting Thursday to learn about some of the resources that Hayne has that can hopefully help. Me and my son love reading again. Uh, because every time we sit down to do practice, it is an epic struggle, as I said earlier. Um, he thinks he needs to know the words rather than know how to read the words. And he will not sound words out. He looks at them and tries to remember them. I'm hoping that I'll be able to find some resource sources to help me with that at that meeting, but in the meantime. I'm hoping that one day he'll be reading Harry Potter to me instead of me reading it to him. And I hope you'll think about renewing the district's focus on phonics and phonemic awareness so that the class of twenty thirty-four and beyond won't share the same struggles that, that he's had to go through. Thank you for your time and thank you all for everything you do. You are working so hard. And the environment that you've created with each other, the respect that you show each other is very commendable. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Ms. Emily Drosh. Ms. Drosh, you should now have the option to unmute your audio to address the board.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, or we can.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to discuss some issues around the lack of available bus drivers. I am aware that this is a nationwide issue and there's no easy solution. My child attends Rowan and does not have a bus driver in the afternoon. The solution has been to have another driver complete their route and then circle back for our kids. This puts the kids at home about forty-five minutes later than usual. Many parents have been picking their kids up to shorten the day or to make it to after-school commitments on time. Not every parent has that option available to them, and many have noted concerns about their children waiting at school so long past the end of the day. I appreciate that Rowan has made an effort to keep our children together at the end of the day while they are waiting. Other parents at schools like Evan City and CBE have reported that their children's morning route has been impacted. And kids are getting to school too late to have school breakfast in the cafeteria. The meals are grab and go style and can be taken to classrooms. However, I'm not sure how practical it is to have children eating in class. Seneca Valley's COVID numbers have been holding steady and show that our commitment to safety and masking has benefited the district. Eating in the cafeteria allows for social distancing, which reinforces our efforts to keep kids safe, healthy and in person at school. Parents and teachers at these schools have noted their concern about children eating breakfast in the classrooms. Again, I am aware that this is a national issue and that Seneca Valley contracts with two outside companies for busing. I have seen an advertisement on the district website noting incentives for driver positions. I would request that advertisements be disseminated more widely to reach the community at large. In the interim, I wonder if it's possible to rotate which kids are kept late. And hope that schools can make accommodations to allow all students to access breakfast in a safe setting. I would also like to extend my deepest gratitude to Jim Nichol, my board representative for getting his CDL. Driving buses in their district. driving buses in their district and for donating his pay back to the Seneca Valley Foundation. That type of commitment to the community is what we need in our board members, and I'm incredibly thankful. It has become apparent to me that giving back and donating both time and resources to the community is a common thread among the Seneca Valley School Board members. As the parent of a new student in the district, I was at first surprised that more members didn't have children within the schools. I can now see that it was short-sighted of me to have that concern as the board's decisions have lasting impacts that span years, if not decades. Board decisions are not just made for the benefit of the current students, but for many classes to come. Not having ties to children at specific schools has allowed many members to see the big picture and make decisions for the good of the district at large. Our board members are truly involved in the community and committed to its success. I would like to close by thanking the board for their time, dedication, and continued commitment to keeping our children safe and in school. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Mr. Dennis Davis. Mr. Davis, you should now have the option to unmute your mic and address the board. My apologies. We are having a bit of technical difficulty again.
Just bear with us, everyone will get this figured out. How about them Steelers, huh?
It's interesting. Mr. Davis, if you don't mind, I'm going to go to the next speaker and I will circle back to you after our next speaker. Moving on to the next speaker is Mr. Chris Marnik.
I see Dennis Davis just popped up on my screen. I don't know if you're seeing on yours.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Davis, you should now have the option to unmute your mic and address the board.
Barely, Mr. Davis. You're very, very low. And now you're back on mute. A little bit better. I just say if you move closer to the microphone and speak up a little bit, that might help us.
Well, let's see if I talk this loud, will that work?
That would work. Sorry.
That's okay. I'll just, I'll speak up. Thank you and good evening, school board and district families. I'm a Seneca Valley parent and a district resident with a small time slot, it must be briefs. And I'm sure I'm gonna upset a few people, but quite frankly, I don't care. I'm here to address the health and safety concerns for every student and staff member. With the decisions, comments, and actions displayed at previous meetings, it's left me disturbed with this district. So I've compelled to speak about maskings and vaccinations. We live in a math and science world today. In our schools, we teach math and science. In our day-to-day lives, we live, breathe, and consume math and science. Everything from the shoes that we wear to the food that we eat, from the vehicles you drive to the sports you watch and play, to the beverages and snacks you consume, doctor-prescribed medications, video games, and all the electronics you own, as well as social media you can't live without. I could go on and on. They're all a product of math and science. In regards to COVID, math and science is showing us how to combat it. Masking and vaccinations are imperative for the health and safety for everyone in the district. The math and science supports this. This is the very same math and science that we utilize in our day-to-day lives. So for anyone that is against masking, please reconsider your decisions and influences and educate yourselves with factual math and science, not social media hearsay. Also, I've heard many people whining about their rights and how they should be able to do what they want to do and instruct their children accordingly. For those people, let me say, no one is trying to take away your rights. We have rules in our country that govern for the greater good, to treat everyone as equals and to keep everyone as safe as possible. If this country didn't have those rules, you wouldn't have all those freedoms that you're so accustomed to. The masking in this district is to help protect everyone that attends, not to take your rights away, your rights as a person. It's a safety precaution, just like many other safety rules and regulations in our school system. Masking is required, but not wearing a mask would directly affect the health and safety of others. Just like other rules, such as why smoking or drugs and alcohol are not allowed and why weapons are not allowed in the school system. Obviously, these rules are designed to protect the health and safety of others. And it's not acceptable for anyone to violate these rules because it directly affects the health and safety of others. COVID is like a weapon. It has killed millions of people and it doesn't care how tough you think you are or what political side you're on. It's a biological weapon of mass destruction in the form of a virus that's invisible to the naked eye. We need to band together and to use the best tools that we have to defeat it. The math and science of this world is showing us what we need to do and we need to comply for the greater good of the school district and the country. This is not a game and this is real. If you cannot see the facts in front of you and are not willing to listen to the math and science from the consensus of professionals on the planet as a whole, then please step aside. If you do not want your child to wear a mask to help protect them and to protect the others in the school, then I simply say this. Cyber schooling is available. If your child is in cyber school, then they don't need to wear a mask. It's as simple as that, because it would not be directly affecting the health and safety of others at the school. Again, wearing a mask does not directly affect other people, but not wearing a mask does directly affect the health and safety of others. So in closing, I would like to say this to the administration. A political agenda has no place when it comes to the health and safety of our children. Utilize the math and science that we teach in our schools to make the best decisions in favor of the health and safety for this district. Just as the S V S D mission statement says on our website, and I quote, "The mission of the district" is to provide a nurturing and safe environment." I would just like to remind everyone to uphold this obligation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker this evening is Mr. Chris Marnik, Jr. Mr. Marnik, you should now have the option to unmute your mic to address the board.
Hello.
Hello.
You okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. I am Chris Marnik, Jr., and I am pro-parental choice on masks and vaccines as well as against critical race theory and quarantining of the healthy. Sadly, because my wife and I love this school district, many of us parents feel like we can no longer trust this board and that the majority of you do not accurately represent your constituents. We have decided to take a stand, not as individuals, but as a community. We will no longer tolerate having the health and futures of our children dictated to us by people that refuse to give us a choice. For those of you that, for those of you that have forgotten, we live in a constitutional democracy. The political theater I have observed over the last couple of months has been inexcusable. I have sat and watched you go from sitting shoulder to shoulder to six feet apart to walking in the room with masks on in just a few short weeks. Now you're holding Zoom meetings that make it seem like you're afraid to face the public. At this point, how can we believe anything else? You claim that there is no bias or censorship, but in receiving right-to-know records, we received the public registration times and the evidence seems to speak to the contrary. It seems you have drew out the summer under the guise that masks would not be required this year to avoid the backlash from parents and prevent the loss of students to other schools. You waited until just a few days before school started to have a meeting that you promised was not going to happen. You left many families hung out to dry, giving us no time to consider our options or make other plans for our children if we didn't agree with your mandate. You also tied our hands illegally by refusing spiritual or philosophical exemptions. To me, this is basically forced compliance. Your actions have been both immoral and unethical, to say the least. We sit here listening to monotonous, self-contradicting rhetoric about case numbers of P C R tests that are proven inaccurate. You talk about mining data and setting thresholds, but produce no relative information that really focuses on the most important issue, the children. During the chaos, you added Learning Twenty Twenty Five program to our school district. It has been regarded by many as an open door to critical race theory. These programs should not be allowed in any school district. They present platforms and sealed classrooms that a student has no choice in whether they desire to hear the information or not. It is every parent's right to focus on religion, culture, sexual orientation, and gender identity as they see fit. It is not the responsibility of the school. Wanting to exercise our immune systems against a virus that has a ninety-nine percent plus and rising recovery rate is by no means willingful ignorance or blindness. In fact, most would consider odds like that a short bet. I believe that if we treated this virus more like the flu, more people would develop natural immunity and we would get through this much faster. This is how we handled it when two of my stepdaughters caught it at their dad's house. And in his house, they happened to be vaccinated and avid mask wearers. In our home, we washed our hands, didn't share glasses or utensils, and told them to cover their mouths when they caught. These simple steps and no one else in our house got sick. You are denying our children of this opportunity. You are handcuffing the strong to try and protect the weak. This is entirely backwards logic. Why are we acting like our children are in the high-risk category when they're in the lowest? You claim that the community stood fifty-fifty on these issues. I find that very difficult to believe. If it is true and the decision was so difficult for you to make, then why didn't you leave it to the community to vote on? You could have given one vote per household and let the majority of your people represent themselves and decide. It seems that you feel that you know what is best for our children and we don't. This is why it bothers us that you don't have children in the district and reluctantly, because we love this district, pulled our youngest daughter out of it this year. In conclusion, we are here to show you that we have drawn a line in this area. We are taking action to regain control of our children's lives, their health, and our community. We are prepared to stand long. Last year's methods did not work. It is time for something new. It's time for a change. I've served this community for fifteen years and I'm up to the task. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One individual registered to speak is no longer able to attend. So that being said, this is our final speaker this evening. So our last speaker is Ms. Stephanie Lane. Ms. Lane, you should now have the option to unmute your mic to address the board.
Good evening. Thank you. I hope everyone is doing well. I know you've probably received numerous amounts of my emails. My name is Stephanie Lane and I am pro-parental choice with masks and vaccines. I would like to start out with our school mission statement. In collaboration with family and community, the mission of Seneca Valley School District is to provide a nurturing and safe environment with academically challenging opportunities, emphasizing digital citizenship, innovation, and global awareness in order to prepare our students to be productive and contributing citizens. Are we truly in collaboration with family and community? There have been numerous requests via public comment and then email for the request of community engagement survey to solicit feedback on pivotal events and decisions when it comes to COVID nineteen. Last night, Bill Hale made a public post on Facebook about some concerns in the public school. His words reflect exactly how I have been feeling as a parent these past eighteen months. Two of my children have autism. I followed the routine vaccine schedule according to their pediatrician and they regressed into autism at eighteen months and four years old. I have videotapes. So for anyone who wants to just think that the vaccines are going to solve everything, unfortunately, there will be people who will not vaccinate their children. Under the current mask mandate, parents are being told to submit notification to the public school district of the children's religious, mental health, or physical health masking exemption and relinquish their personal private details about their faith, mental health, physical health, and health-related decisions before their child's exemption will be honored. Even worse, students and parents who do not willingly comply with these invasive requests have their personal information reported to state as violators. Some unmasked students are even called out publicly in front of their peers, isolated or separated from their masked peers and provided a different education opportunity and experience than other masked students. We have heard quite a few examples these last, from last week's speakers. Last year, I experienced my kindergartner being completely segregated from his peers and told the only way that he can play and make friends was with a face shield. My friend Lisa Bowers' daughter, Madison, had a cranial facial surgery and had to wear a halo following her procedure and was unable to wear a mask. She was isolated in front of her peer in front of the classroom. I will be sending an email shortly with pictures for your records. Last week, Brandy and Matt Herrick reached out to the school board members and sent an email to the assistant principal, principal, superintendent of elementary schools, and the superintendent. After one conversation with the school board president, they thought that it would be handled. As of two thirty P M. this afternoon, she still has had no follow-up from school administration. Her sixth grader has been harassed daily for over a week while in class. The assistant principal would walk into the classroom while under his teacher's care to single him out. And finally told he was a disappointment and her label as a good kid was wrong. There have been other stories from parents and how these children have been treated. This is totally unacceptable. There is public masking incident survey. This survey is meant to collect and track incidents bullying, intimidation, and violation of parent and student rights. I truly believe most public, personal really care about what's best interest of their children. However, there are some who are choosing to join Governor Wolf and in the abuse of their authority to put their political agenda ahead of what's best interest of children and families and to trample our rights and freedoms. There needs to be accountability. Let's get back to teachers and administration focusing on kids and teaching and not being mass police. George Floyd put it best, "I can't breathe." Thank you and have a great night.
Very much. Dr. Plon, that was our last speaker, correct? Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. We are going to move on in our meeting and I'm going to look for a motion that we approve the following. To approve the, well, I'm stealing it from you, Mr. Nichol. Sorry about that. Then I'm gonna look that we approved the work session, meeting minutes from August second, twenty twenty-one. Action meeting of August ninth, twenty twenty-one, and special meeting of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, all providing your backup. The treasures report as providing your backup and the general fund bills in the total of three million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, twenty dollars and eighty-six cents as provided in your backup. And the construction fund bills in the amount of two million, six hundred fifty-seven dollars. I'm sorry, let me correct that. Two million, six hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Any questions, comments on any of these issues? Hearing and seeing that, Ms. Missland, if you call the role, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle? Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
I'll hand it back over to you, Mr. Nichol, since I stole the last one from you.
Not a problem. I will make a motion with regards to this administration action item. It is for the Seneca Valley School District Health and Safety Plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, we are approving a revision to that very same plan. That revision was detailed for all of us in our backup. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out, for those of the hundred and fourteen that are left, the only, and Ms. Plon, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The only modification with this update is just referencing the Governor Wolf's current order, making a point of noting that to the extent that that order falls by the wayside, that it just, it goes back to our approved directive, which was for the substantial and the high categorization. Ms. Plon, did I read that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nichol. Any other questions or comments? I'll look around. I'm not seeing any. So, Ms. Missland, if you would call the role, please.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative. Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to instruction action. Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following instruction action items. First would be book disposal. Approve the sale of recycling of updating, have outdated and obsolete books from the Ryan Goyer Middle School and the intermediate high school is provided in the backup. Second is Glade Run Lutheran Services Partial Hospitalization Program Agreement. Approve the Glade Run Lutheran Services Partial Hospitalization Program Agreement provided in the backup. And the third and final item is the Non-Public Title I Services Agreement. Approve the Third Party Letter of Agreement for Non-Public Title I Services with the Midwestern Intermediate Unit for, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year is provided in the backup.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Harrison. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Whittleson. Any discussion on any of these items or questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, as I, as I was reviewing the agenda for today, it struck me that it seems pretty much every month now we are asked to approve applications for, for grants to support our educational mission. It's a little hard to keep track of all that over the time. I wonder if I could ask administration to consider creating some sort of a summary report or a scoreboard that would just list what the, what the grant was, what the grant, who the grantee was, what the grant was for, and the amount so that we could see humanely over the months and years how successful we're being in securing grants and support of the school district.
Dr. Vitale?
Yes, we will be glad to take care of that. We'll bring that no later than the November meeting, possibly sooner.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this suggestion, Mr. Peterson. Any other questions or comments? Looking around and not seeing any. Ms. Missland, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison? Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to business and finance action. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you, Mr. DeTulio. I will make a motion for the approval of the following four business finance actions for this evening. The first relates to change orders, approved construction change orders for Ermun Crest Elementary and Middle School, as included in the backup. Item B relates to the sale of properties, consent to the sale of a property located within the Seneca Valley School District by Butler County Tax Claim Bureau, parcel number four hundred dash S one dash B one hundred dash zero, 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 zero. Item C, natural gas agreement extensions. Approve the agreement extensions for the supply of natural gas for our school buildings with direct energy and UGI energy services for the term of September twenty twenty-two through August twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the Western Pennsylvania Natural Gas Consortium, AIU three joint purchasing. And the final action relates to Act Thirty-two Collection, Tax Collection Committee. Appoint Linda McEnstein of Cranberry Township, I'm sorry. Appoint Linda McEnstein, Cranberry Township Financial Analyst as a, as an additional alternative voting delegate to the Act Thirty-two Tax Collection Committee for Butler County on behalf of the Seneca Valley School District. This appointment is effective immediately and shall continue until terminated by the board.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Jacobs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Any discussion or questions on any of these issues? Looking around and not seeing any. Lisa, if you call the roll, please.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to personnel action. Mr. Whittleson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, under personnel, I would like to make a motion to approve the appointments, the addendum, the contracted services, and the leaves as provided to the board in our backup.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. Any discussion? Well, we discussed this in executive my fault, habit. Let's just go right to the roll call, please, Lisa.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Whittleson?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with nine in the affirmative.
Thank you very much. We are in receipt of twenty-one, I believe, piece of communication and a couple more might have come in in the last couple hours. Those have all been distributed and read by the, the board and a lot of these issues have already been resolved or followed up on, so commend the staff for all that. Is there any other issue to be brought before our board? Look around and see. And hearing and seeing none, I would look for a motion to adjourn our meeting, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. And Mr. Hester, I saw you raise your hand. I'll give you the second on that, sir. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.